Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September 28th Select Board Meeting. Welcome to the people joining us online. We do have someone that is calling in and it's creating some static. I don't know if anyone on the phone, it doesn't have a name, but maybe if someone on the phone could mute themselves if you're joining by phone. That would be helpful. So as usual, I will open the meeting by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Usually, we have public forum first. I'm curious, you're not here for public forum. Is anyone joining us online here for public forum? Okay, doesn't look like anybody is. Okay. And then announcements, Ed, did you have any announcements?
Well, yes, well, Brian's online.
Yes, that's right.
I just want people to know that, that Brian is here.
Yes.
He's a little bit out in the weather, but that's okay. As far as announcements coming down here, next month is October, so it's a good month to check your smoke detectors. Our fire chief's here tonight. If you have any questions on smoke detectors, I'm sure during the week, Monday through Friday, if you gave him a call, he'd be happy to answer that. Also, it's getting colder, and I did notice that the Council of Aging is having a lot of more participation and a lot of functions because the place downstairs is beautiful. So seniors, you know, instead of hiding inside during the winter, check out the Council of Aging. So those are the announcements I wanted to bring up, that's all.
And the only thing I wanted to mention, and it actually piggybacks on what you're saying, the Council on Aging has also done some concerts lately that I haven't had a chance to go to, but I know, I've heard from people how great they were. I intended to go to one and then wasn't able to make it because of field hockey, but just so great. They're just doing such a great job and bringing people together in their outside and at a time when, you know, I think people really want to be outside, so that's really exciting. And we have some more events coming up in October. Those will be discussed in our agenda. So it's nice to have some things like that.
And the Council on Aging, Friends of the Council on Aging-
Yes.
-held that wine tasting last week.
They had a wine that I did attend.
And it was a very well-attended event.
Really wonderful. And a thank you to Black Birch for how they, you know, do this community service with these different tastings and as fundraisers. So it was really nice, a lot of, a lot of great, nice friends there. It was a little bit of a downpour.
Yes.
Yeah, but that's okay.
Spoiled the moment for a bit.
Just a little, just briefly. So that's it for announcements. Marlene, you don't have anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay. We do have some minutes to approve.
Make a motion to accept the minutes for September 14th, 2021.
I'll second that. A motion's made in second to accept these minutes. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brian, do you want to chime in? Nope. Okay. Okay, the first order of posted business tonight is we have the Hatfield Firefighters Association here with a request for a ceremonial bonfire permit, which is the best news ever because it means we're having a bonfire this year. Those are so much fun. So do you guys want to approach the mic or, I don't know who's speaking to that, if it's both of you or?
A little bit of both.
Okay.
So I'll speak to the first part. So under Mass General Law, Chapter 111, the fire chief actually has to submit the request to the Board of Selectmen to hold the ceremonial bonfire. Under the law, it's only allowed one per year, and it's to some type of civic organization or special event, so forth. So I'm actually not here as the association because I'm not a member of the association. I'm here doing the official request for the bonfire. And as you saw in my letter, Fire Department is in charge of it, myself and Deputy Beldon will be there overseeing the actual fire portion of the evening. So it's-
Take a motion to accept the bonfire.
Second.
So loud about bonfires.
Second. A motion has been made in second. Any further discussion, Brian? Are you, do you have any questions or? It looks like your mic is on, Brian, but we can't hear you.
Is your speaker on?
Still, still can't hear you. His mic is on.
What does it say?
Oh, wait a second, we're checking something.
Yeah, no, I can't hear.
Try it again. We can't hear you, Brian. Are you a thumbs up with, all right, so, so a motion's made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay. So Carrie?
So I'm here tonight to piggyback to the bonfire request that the chief has made to request the liquor license, for the one-day liquor license for our event for that evening that the Fire Association will hold. We've held it in the past with no issues, no problems. I do have tonight to give to Karen. It was the last bit of paperwork, but we do have our insurance policy through Amherst Insurance. It's all official and done, and this is the final draft and copy. So we have full insurance coverage along with, I had submitted the letter from the Lions Club Pavilion giving us permission for the rental of the facility. And honestly, it's just the same thing we've done every year. Nothing's different, except this year, we're keeping our event to local events. We're not, we don't have any true, what are you, headliners. Our headliner this year is going to be Trailer Trash, which everybody knows and is a local band, along with ADHD and a new acoustic singer, Holly May, who's out of Charlemont, Mass. She's kind of new to the area of the singing area, so not many people know about her in this area, but she has an amazing voice, so we're looking forward to that being part of our event. And we have everything in order. We have all of our Hatfield police, we have detail officers secured and dealt with through Chief Tukoschak and Lieutenant Phillips, and that's all set. We have a hired security company with seven extra security people, plus we have four backstage retired police officers that have offered up their time to do backstage security. So we have plenty of security for the night of the event. I've talked with the Board of Health, and we have everything under control versus being an outdoor event, numbers, COVID, all of that stuff. We have tons of hand sanitizer and stuff for people. People can wear masks if they feel it's necessary for the outdoor event, though it's not required of them. We will not be checking or asking for vaccination status of anybody, just so people are aware, and it is a buy tickets only online. There's only a handful of comp tickets that we are giving out to our big sponsors and some ticket giveaways on the radio, but other than that, everything is a buy ticket online so that we can do things electronically to kind of have that hands-off ability. And something new this year that we've been able to do through our liquor part of everything is that we are accepting credit cards or debit card transactions. So it's, again, that less of that cash contact, hand-touching contact stuff. So it will make the overall night and event go much smoother, we think. So we're hoping for, fingers crossed, that that goes smoothly.
Well, this isn't exactly your first rodeo.
No, it is not our first rodeo. But we have some changes this year, but hopefully it'll, it can be a great outdoor event. I mean, last year, we obviously missed it. Everybody had to stay inside and kind of, you know, keep themselves away from everybody. And hopefully, even though with where things are at now currently, still that we're dealing with COVID, we still can have a great outdoor event. The Three County Fair seemed to go off without any glitches or problems. Biggie so far seems to be underway and doing well too, with no issues that have been known to the public. So our fingers are crossed that our event will be the same and we shouldn't have any issues.
Yeah, ours is much smaller.
Ours is much, much smaller than either one of those events, but still, like, we have everything that we've always had in place, set to go, and more, just for the sake of caution.
Right.
So hopefully, people feel comfortable and we'll get more tickets sold. And I know a lot of people wait till the week before to see what the weather's like, but we have it all under control, so we're good to go.
I'd like to commend you guys for all the work you've done over the years, and this event is a great event, and I hope you have a fantastic attendance. And I want to thank you for taking on the responsibilities of this event because I think it's been really great for the town. So I'll make a motion to accept the liquor license, or let me get this correct, the Hatfield Lions Club function for their music festival fundraiser.
Great. I'll second that. Oh, we can hear Brian now. Okay, perfect. So, so Brian, we'll let Brian second that. So a motion's, a motion's made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would just echo Ed's sentiments that this is just so much fun, such a nice event. People, you know, far outside of Hatfield know about this event and look forward to it every year. So I'm glad that you were able to put the precautions in place to, you know, be able to do this. And, you know, last year, we sort of improvised with that drive-in.
Yeah, absolutely.
Which was, which was fun.
It was fun. It was a good night. It was at least something for people to do.
But I'm really, I have my tickets, my family has, we have our tickets, and we're really looking forward to it, so.
If I may for two seconds, and only because you did announcements already, one thing that I just wanted to really quickly throw out there is we'll be doing the Spooktacular event through the PTA at the end of the month, so that's something we're bringing back for the kids. Just because I'm taking the opportunity, I'm sorry. But then also, we, I wanted to just give a little shout out to Lashco Tree Service out of Hatfield. Jeremy Cotton and his company donated us all of the bark mulch for our playgrounds at the elementary school for them to be resurfaced and redone with six inches of bark mulch on both play, all playground spaces. So I just wanted to give a big thank you to him. I'm the president of the PTA, so I just wanted to take this opportunity just to get to say that tonight.
Oh, great.
I hope you don't mind.
Thank you, I did see that. No, and actually, you reminded me, I'm going to backtrack because I forgot two announcements. One is that October 10th at 2:00 PM, there's going to be a field dedication up at the new field hockey field, dedicating that field to Judy Strong. And so that's going to be, I'm working on the program right now with my Booster Club hat, and it's going to be really nice. And then there'll be a ceremony, and then it's followed by an alumni game where we have a bunch of alumni field hockey players coming back to play the varsity team. So it's going to be a lot of fun. That's October 10th at 10 o'clock, excuse me, 2:00. And then October 16th, of course, is homecoming, which will have all the normal festivities, the little parade through town. So if you hear sirens that day, don't be alarmed, it's all in good fun. And then there'll be a field hockey game, girls soccer, boys soccer. So it's going to be a lot going on at the school and a lot of fun. So feels good to have some of those events happening. I can't believe I forgot to mention that, so thanks for jogging my memory.
Sure, apologize, but we do have a 5:45 posted hearing.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
It's trying to shut me up.
Just quickly, before you move on, though, referring to this application, in the past, the board has waived the fee, so I would just get across the board.
Oh, for this fiscal year.
For this one day.
Oh, for the one day, yes.
For the one-day special license.
Do you want to make a motion to waive the fee for the bonfire?
I'll make a motion to waive the fee for the bonfire for the one day.
Second. A motion's made in second, although, is there any further discussion? Brian, are you okay with that? Oh, you did the wrong thing. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
It's been so long since I've had to do this stupid promotion. I'm sorry.
That's okay, Brian.
Hi, Brian.
So we do, you're right, we do have a 5:45 transfer of liquor license hearing, so we will, you want to open that up, Ed? Don't we have to, well, can I officially just open that hearing?
Yes, you can.
And I know that we're joined online by Mr. Woodridge and Mr. Colleen, hello?
Hello there.
So we have an application here to transfer the liquor license from Kenneth Holehut Double Bs to Mill River Ventures. This is over on Prospect Court, most people know that, but just to, for people who may not know that. So is, I mean, it looks like everything is in line. Oh, I have to reference the date, time, location, and purpose of this? So it's 5:45 PM on September 28th. We're here at the Hatfield Town Hall, and the hearing is, as I mentioned, for the transfer of the liquor license. Are there any public comments? Can I let Mr. Woodridge or Mr. Colleen speak first, and then we can go to public comments? Did either of you want to speak to this application at all?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
So yeah, so we're looking to open up a tavern, industrial-style tavern with some wood-fired pizza, with a nice outdoor environment. So yeah, so we're going to hopefully start that this winter, and then we'll be ready for hopefully early spring.
That is so great. Hatfield has needed, you know, a pizza restaurant for a long time. You guys are really smart to be doing that. And, you know, it would be, it'll be nice to see some activity and everything in, you know, what is really sort of a neighborhood bar for Hatfield, so really feel, feel good to see that. Is anyone joining us for public comment on this application? Everyone's mics are off, so if anyone's speaking, I can't hear you. I'm going to assume that no one is. There, it looks like there's some comments. Are we able to see what those are?
We usually-
We usually shut those off, but-
Yeah, we don't.
I just want to make sure it's not something about the hearing.
We don't usually take those during the meeting, so.
Yeah, we don't, okay. So I, since no one's speaking up or waving their hands or anything, I'm going to assume that no one's, no one's here to speak to this. So I, I'm fine with it. It certainly looks like everything's in order, of course, with your application. I don't have any comments other than to say I'm really, really happy to hear about this venture that you're undertaking. Did you have anything?
No, I just want to say thank you for starting another business in town. I think it's fantastic. I know the past manager, Ken Holehut, did a great job down there making sure the place was kept up and kept things going, so I think every owner that's had that business has always done a good job, and I'm looking forward to your new restaurant, so.
And I think townspeople will be really, really excited about this and looking forward to you opening. So just a, just a great thing, just a really great thing. Okay, so we just asked to close the hearing, and then we don't have to make a decision?
Close the hearing and then vote to grant the license.
Oh, okay, all right.
And of course, it's subject to the state's review.
Right. Do you want to make a motion to close the hearing?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. A motion's been made in second. Is there any further discussion? Brian, did you have any comments or questions at all?
No, I just want to congratulate the reopening of that location. I think it's awesome. Wish you luck.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying. It says not required under number six.
Yes, it does.
Yes, there is, yeah, so that's great.
So all those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Do you want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the transfer of the license from, to Mill River Ventures Incorporated from, the actual name would be from-
It's right on the front page. It's right, the motion is written exactly.
My mistake. Okay, to grant, I make a motion to grant the petition to transfer an all-alcoholic beverage restaurant license as specified in the application from Kenneth Holehut Double Bs to Mill River Ventures Incorporated, Justin Killen, manager.
I'll make, I'll second that. A motion is made in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. We look, I look forward to your progress on that. Okay, we are just sailing right along. Our next order of business is a COVID-19 update is-
Claudia's supposed to be joining, though.
Is Claudia here? Maybe she's a caller. Claudia, are you with us? Is anyone else here to give an update? I don't know, some of these don't-
Board of Health.
Is anyone from the Board of Health on the call?
Claudia confirmed she would join the meeting.
Well, maybe if she shows up, we'll backtrack.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe she, yeah.
Something just changed. Did she come on?
Oh, we have people leaving, exiting the meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay, our next order of business is, we are joined tonight by Michael Norton. Michael's joining us online, and this is to discuss a bike event in April of 2022, Competitive Edge Racing USA Cycling Bike Race Event. Michael, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, I also have Tyler. He's, he's a local. I'm turning all my races over to him, so I'm going to be putting these races on in each genre, so he's going to be taking these races from now on, which I didn't put him on. This race is the same race we had back in April of 2019, and we didn't have any problems other than it was a nice rainy day that day. But the way our bike races work, we're going to be starting on Milling, yeah, the Billings Way, start from there, and there's a 12-mile course that goes up into Wakefield and loops back around, and we do different groups that go out there. We are supported by all our emergency, we have EMTs on the road, all the medical in place. Also, we are governed by the USA Cycling, which is out of Colorado, and they're the ones that actually permit us. And by doing so, we also carry our insurance through them. It's a $3 million policy that covers everything. Myself, I've been putting races on for over 30 years. I've been doing it mostly out in western Mass, which is the Muntzen, Sturbridge, out near area, which we get about, typically about 400 riders. The last time we had it in Hatfield, we did have about 400 riders. So we're asking permission again to put it on.
Great, it sounds terrific. I assume you also work with our police department on, on all of the traffic patterns and all of that?
Yes, I sat down with the police chief and the fire chief about two weeks ago or three weeks ago, and we discussed all the scenarios, and I would be hiring the police officers for the turns that we need the traffic stopped. So the bike race is just like a big tractor-trailer going down the highway. We have cars in front and in the back, and it moves as a group, so we don't stop any traffic on the road. It's just a moving traffic, and our bike racers will be averaging about 25 miles an hour for most of the time, sometimes a little faster and sometimes a little slower.
Well, my, my only question I had was, this race goes through Whately, and I know that you've talked to Hatfield. My question is, have you talked to the police department in Whately or anybody in Whately?
Yes, there's a whole application. I'm having everybody sign off. They have a whole sign-off sheet, and I have all that, almost all taken care of. I think there's only one more person I have to have sign off on that. So the way this gets run on, we have to get both your town and that town to make sure all gets approved before we can put the race on.
Well, you're certainly thinking ahead, if it's not till April, so that's good. And I can imagine that your riders must love cycling through our beautiful town, so. Well, it sounds like you've thought of everything. I know you've done this before and things have worked out well. I don't really have any other questions.
Have we gotten anything from the police chief saying that he's okay with it?
He has communicated via email and stopped in my office and said that he has, doesn't have any concerns, and he will have maybe one to two officers on that day.
Brian, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I just wanted to thank Michael for joining the call tonight, and I, I hope the weather is better than the last race that you had.
Just two, and two other things. I'd like to try to remember to maybe somehow remind townspeople just before the race that this will be going on through town, just so that they're, you know, make, you know, we, we're sure that they're extra cautious if there's going to be, you know, riders in town. So Michael, maybe you could reach out to Marlene, you know, maybe a couple of weeks before the race, just to remind us to maybe get, I don't know, Bob, would we do a call on something like this, or maybe just put it up on social media, and maybe we could mention something at a Select Board meeting too, so that, just as a reminder, you know, it's only just a little extra security precaution, I guess.
And I usually, I would usually do that about 30 days before the event.
Okay, that's, that's perfect.
Before April, I would contact the police chief again, make sure we get all the duty officers, and at that point, I can contact his office.
Excellent, okay. And Tyler, thank you for joining us and for your work on this event too. So, great, I, do we need to take a formal vote on this now, or?
No, just if the board agrees.
Okay, I'm, I'm in agreement. I think it's, it's great.
As long as the police chief's happy, I'm happy.
Brian, you're good?
I'm good, yes, thank you very much.
Great. Michael, Tyler, thank you very much. Good luck with your race.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Our next agenda, has Claudia joined us by chance? Our next topic is the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, and this is, we were going to have a discussion tonight with the Finance Committee and Capital Improvement, but that's being put off until October. So I guess I was, I mean, I don't really want to discuss too much. I mean, my, I think, but maybe just to, because I think last, at our last meeting, we talked about, this is extra money coming into the town, and it's a good amount of money. It's $970,000, but there's very specific parameters in which it can be used, and we have asked for some suggestions from departments how they might like to spend it, and some departments have sent in some, some really good ideas that will, you know, give us a lot of things to discuss and think about.
You should have an updated spreadsheet there that was given just prior to the meeting.
Right.
So there are some small, small items, others are, you know-
Right.
-significant, and DPW, we're still waiting for some cost estimates for recommended projects.
I guess my, I don't know how Ed feels and Brian feels, but I, rather than get into the specifics of these requests, I'd rather do that when we're all together with the Finance Committee, Capital Planning Committee, and we've all had time to look at this a little bit more too. That's my preference on this. I saw that Kristy Boudreau is joining, and I know, Kristy, are you here as a member of the Capital Planning to be in on this part of the discussion?
I sit on that as part of my school committee duties, and I just thought I would listen in tonight so that I was prepared for the 18th of October.
Okay, I just didn't know if you wanted to pipe in at all or had any questions or comments about waiting until October on this.
I'm just listening, thank you.
I don't want to put you on the spot either, but I just wanted to, okay. Okay, so I, I mean, that's, for me, that's probably the extent of what I'd like to discuss on this particular topic tonight, unless you had something else.
No, no, I think it's, it's good to take the time to make sure we spend this money wisely and hear from all the departments what their needs are, because if we can use this free money to purchase some stuff, I think that's great.
Yeah, I agree that we, I want to be careful and deliberate, and I want to try to get as much bang for our buck as possible out of this money because it was unexpected, unusual, and let's really use it to our advantage, so that would be my only comments. Brian, how about you? Did you want to comment at all?
I can defer with you guys. I mean, we just want to be deliberate. We, we don't need to rush into this. I mean, as far as, we want to have our readings and hear from all the different interested parties first, you know, we've got, we don't want to wait to begin a, what might become a large, what might be a larger project, but by the same token, it's not that we have to, you know, make decisions over the next two weeks or something. So I would agree Diana was you and Ed, we just need to sit down with our colleagues and other work groups and put the best plan in action forward and make sure, by the way, that everything we push forward, and I'm sure we'll lose this, meets the criteria because it's, it's like those guidelines are pretty stringent-
Right.
-for the allocate and the use of these monies, so.
Right, I know. I wish, I wish there was a little bit more leeway than there is, but it is what it is, and we'll, as I said, make the best use of it. And then, you know, we have-
Those lines, I'm sorry, I just wanted to say one more thing. You know, while, while there's larger projects that we may be looking at, I do think we might be able to knock out some of the smaller items that might be necessary for, for the be able to knock out some of the smaller items that might be necessary for the different buildings, you know, maybe it's just air purifiers or something like that. I mean, I don't think we need to wait too long on those things that don't cost a ton of money, but would be necessary and would be for the various buildings or the various floors of the building or something like that. I think Marlene might be talking to that a little bit later. But, you know, we don't want to rush with a big project, but I think we can knock out some of the little ones, I guess, if Mark and I have to.
And those smaller things, like you're mentioning air filters, and there's some other things in these lists, I mean, that's completely in the spirit of what this money is coming to the community for. So, you know, I would agree that it's easy to kind of do some of that. And then, I guess, wearing my Capital Planning Committee hat, you know, I'd like to look at things that were already on the capital plan instead of like new, you know, new things that, but I'm open-minded to both. You know, but the capital plan is something that's been, you know, carefully and deliberately put together over years and years, and I would suggest we sort of peak there first, but that's just.
If those items hit
Well, right, of course, they all have to hit
There's five categories, so they, you know, we have to look at that.
Right, right. We can't do anything that's outside of those categories, but, okay, very good. Well, that's a discussion we'll all look forward to, and that would, are we tentative for October 18th?
Yes.
Okay.
That is a scheduled date.
Okay, right.
On the overall schedule.
Okay, perfect. Great. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the DPW report. Phil, join us up at the microphone, please.
Oh, I don't know. I don't know if you were thinking about something. So the water and sewer rates, we had a discussion prior. We're not, we're going to wait to October 18th to set them.
Okay.
I understand that Dave Prickett from DPC will be attending the meeting to go over it. He's our consultant as far as setting the water and sewer rates as well as the sewer master plan. So I know Marlene reached out to him, and he is going to attend the next meeting.
Okay. Can we, should we maybe, is this what will be proposed, what's in front of us?
Yes, this is current as of last week.
Okay.
So this, the consultant, Dave Prickett, and his staff has updated this information. This will be made available to the community on the town's website and Facebook.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask. If, I want to just make sure that townspeople have this information before the hearing date, that's all.
Absolutely.
And I knew they would, but, so I guess, can I just go through it a little bit, just for the sake of this meeting? Okay, so the sewer, the proposed sewer increase is 5%, and the proposed water increase is also 5%. Okay. And again, this gets back to sort of trying to catch us up in terms of our rates and get us in line with, so that we can qualify for, is it USDA?
Correct.
Grants. We sort of lagged behind, I guess, and didn't increase rates for quite a while. So now we're trying to incrementally get to where we need to be without too much of a shock to residents all at one time.
The town needs to prove that we can cover our operating costs, and we weren't doing that.
We weren't doing that. Okay. And this, let's see, if, this says the approximate average additional cost per month per residential user for the sewer rate would be $2.40, and the approximate average additional cost per month per residential user for water would be $1.85. So, reasonable, but making progress towards where we need to be. So that's all, we're not going to discuss this any further tonight, the hearing will actually be
Right, the hearing will be conducted on the 18th.
Okay.
Like I said, Mr. Prickett will be here to answer any questions.
Okay. And people can, there's a lot more information on what I'm looking at here, but I think it's probably best if
We'll get that up as soon as possible.
Yeah, people will have the opportunity to read all of it, and that's something I'm sure they'll do.
We'll have it there this week.
Yep, okay. Did you have anything on that?
No, I think we'll wait to the 18th, and then we get this information out to the town. I think that'd be very good to let everybody take a chance to look at it, in case they want to have input when they come.
Yes, exactly. How about you, Brian?
I just wanted to make, excuse me, make a comment echoing what Diana and Ed both said, which, and really, I'm just going to lump the approximate rate increase together. So just in my head, doing the math quickly, if you're a sewer user, as Diana mentioned, we're looking at about $2.40. So let's just raise that to $3 for even numbers' sake. So three times 12, right, $3 a month times 12, that's $36. And the 1/85, let's up it and round it off to $2, when I look at the 24. So 36 and 24, you're looking approximately, every user's a little different, but approximately the average would be an increase of $5 a month or $60 a year.
Right. And can I just, a user
I just wanted to say it out loud now, because sometimes that's, you know, when we went through this in the beginning, you hear a percentage which sounds high, but when you do the math and the true numbers, you know, not that $60 a year is anything to sneeze at, but you have to put it in perspective of what you're really paying. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that's all. And again, to echo Diana and Ed, I would also add that we've been playing catch-up for many, many years, so this isn't just about being able to position ourselves for the grants, which certainly is a huge deal, but it's also to try to get water and sewer service to be somewhat self-sufficient. And it's been lagging those rate increases for years, and as Ed, I think, at our last meeting said, it's time to pay the biper. So here we are, the three of us, the board of selectmen, the DPW director, the watering engineer, are doing what we need to do to keep the water safe and to keep the expenses as low as we can, but we also have to pay for what we use and operating costs and things like that.
Right.
That's all. I'm sure we'll talk more at the hearing, but I just wanted to make a few comments.
And migrating towards it being paid by the users as opposed to some, in this case, it's sometimes paid, some of it's paid by taxation, including non-users, so.
It is set up as an enterprise fund, so.
Right, yeah. Can I just ask, user, is that household or, or is it how many people are in a household? I'm assuming it's just a household.
Just a household, correct.
Okay, so, okay. I didn't know how you calculated that. Okay. Okay, so we will obviously talk about that more on the 18th, but thanks for that. And then we have the Water and Sewer Billing Commitment?
No, that's not ready yet. Tony just talked to me a couple minutes ago, matter of fact, and he's working with Mike from Vadar, because there were some estimated bills that had to be put in. And then he emailed Sharon and I both together and told tomorrow should be, the commitment should be set to go as far as in putting it in. The only thing that we had trouble with, and we contacted a building inspector, is that there was quite a few houses that were recided this year in town, and the contractors take off, they rip off the outside reader. So, you know, nobody says anything to you, go read the meter, and then there's no meter to read. So we've contacted him, and from now on, you know, he's going to have to make sure that whoever resides their house at that meter goes back on, that the reader goes back on.
Yeah. Okay. And will we need to do a meeting to
Well, that's, I guess, you said the commitment will be ready tomorrow. Does that mean that the collector's office will
She'll have all the information tomorrow, but she has to work with, is she there?
I know he needs several days, three to five days to
And you still have to work with Mike, correct? Yeah, so she still has to work with Vadar, so.
But you don't need anything from us, a vote from us to move forward with getting the bills out, right?
Well, the board, the select board is required to vote the commitment, but that can, I think, that can still be done on the 18th.
Oh, okay, so it can be done.
Yeah, the bills can go out, and then the commitment will come to you, what it was, and you can just
Okay, I just didn't want, I know we're not having a meeting to the 18th, and I didn't want that to hold up the bill.
Yeah, we shouldn't have to hold up the bill for that.
Okay, okay.
So I know it's not the only agenda, but since I'm here, Diane and I had an opportunity to go up to Route 5 today and to discuss something else. But as you see, that the progress is going very well down there. I mean, they started, the water's done to USA Waste, and then from there to the Chestnut Street connection is going to be 12-inch pipe, so he's going to wait to do that section. But he started to lay the sewer, so he laid the sewer from Lencied up to the bridge to the culvert, then from the culvert going north, he started laying the pipe, because he wants to get as much pipe in as he can so he can final pave that section. But she was up there, I was up there today, it looks like it's going well.
And that's part of Phase 1, right?
That's Phase 1, correct. Phase 2 was only for the pump stations.
Right.
Can we maybe, can you give an update to townspeople of what they might be able to expect in terms of that, you know, I drive that section of road all the time, and what they might be able to expect in terms of how long there'll be activity out there, and then the condition of the road?
The condition of the road is going to be milled and paved to where he ends the sewer. So he's trying to get it in so he can do the final paving there, but going north where they put the water in, he's going to have to shimcoat it according to MasDOT specs. They've already contacted him, and I made him well aware of that.
Okay.
So I think, I thought the cutoff date was in November sometime where he has to be off the road, so.
Yep. Okay, so we could expect maybe another month of construction out there?
October, probably.
And then the road will be somewhat decent
Somewhat leveler.
Passing for the remainder of the winter?
Yeah.
Until it starts up again, okay.
He's trying to get as much pipe in as he can right now.
Okay. Okay, did you have any questions?
I just have a concern, well, not a concern, it's a, residents have a question. This comes to trees. So for the residents out there, it's more of a matter of information. So you have, you have trees that are by the power lines, and on the other side of the road, we have trees on the other side of the road, and anything within 17 feet from the center to either side, is my understanding that is the town takes care of those trees. So the question was, if a tree is bad and it needs to be cut down, if it's under the power line, my understanding is that the power company pays for that. If it's on the other side, that's not under the power line, under town, the town pays for that. Would that be correct, or am I incorrect on this?
It's close. You're close.
Okay, so maybe for the townspeople, you can explain it.
So as far as the trees
Are we talking generally everywhere or just on this?
No, literally, just talk generally, throughout Hatfield. So on the side where there's no power lines and the tree is on town property, yes, it is our responsibility. On the other side of the street, if there's power lines, we do our best to make EverSource take them down, because of course the cost factor. But sometimes, in some cases, the tree is bad enough to take down, but not in their eyes, should I say it that way? So if it, do I feel if it's a danger, we'll take it down, whether it's in the lines or not, but that's not our policy. We usually contact EverSource numerous times for trees, and they've been pretty good. They've changed a few personnel there, so. But yes, usually that is mostly correct, that if it's under the power lines, it's an EverSource problem.
Because some people are just concerned how that works in town, it's up to them.
Let's see, you know.
And sometimes they're great about having these contracts where, you know, you'll have a tree company that's in town for literally months, just cleaning up along these lines, so.
You know, I fought with them for years and still fighting with them. Yes, you can take all the trees down, the 100 trees that they took down this past summer, but what about the stumps? I fight with them constantly about grinding the stumps, because I don't think it's the town's responsibility to go back and grind the stumps.
Right.
But it is 17 feet from the center to, well, 34 across, but 17, right? Is that
Yes, yeah.
Are all streets the same? Don't some streets have different layouts?
I mean, Main Street's huge.
Right, Main Street's much wider, so the layout can be variable.
Yeah, the layout can be different, but that's a, you know, that's a good
Rule of thumb.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that out to the public, because there was some questions about that.
Excellent. Brian, did you have anything else for Phil while he's here?
I did not, thank you, though.
Okay.
Ed, thanks for asking that question about the trees. I was asked something about that the last week or so. Good explanation, Phil, thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Phil.
Thank you, Phil.
So, Marlene, our Town Administrator's Report is next.
Just quickly, so the state is looking to close out the CARES funding, so that was, you know, for the last year. So I will be working on closing that report or closing that out and filing the report. I'll be working with the accountant on that as well. And two other reports are due at the end of September and 1st of October. Hazard mitigation grant quarterly report is due October 1st, I'm working on that, and the Mass Works Grant Quarterly Report. And we will also be submitting a request for reimbursement with the Mass Works Grant Report. So our next meeting, I will have copies of those reports and just a expense report on the Mass Works Grant. Also, on October 18th, we'll be having our second public meeting for the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update that we're required to do.
Okay. I hope people can appreciate how much work these things are. I, you know, it really is, this reporting and, you know, grant follow-up and grant applications, and we talked about this a little bit when Bob was here at the last meeting talking about his grant, but it's a lot of work and
State requires it, and, you know
You know, we appreciate you and the other departments that go out and get grant money, but then do all of this reporting and follow-up, so thank you for that.
Don't want to hold up the money.
Absolutely not, absolutely not. So that's great. That's it?
That's all I have.
Okay, perfect. Ed, Brian, did either of you have a question for Marlene at all? Okay.
I do not, thank you.
And then
Well, I would echo what you said, that is a lot of work. So thank you to Marlene, and everybody who's been involved with that since day one. Appreciate it.
A lot of grant money flows into town, and, you know, whether it's, you know, like I said, Bob, you, the school department has tons of grants and tons of reporting to do. You know, there's just, Council on Aging does, they all do, and Phil, I mean, so it's a lot of work, and it falls on our department heads, and it's a duty that I think a lot of townspeople may not really recognize or appreciate, but we do. So our last, it looks like our last topic is an auctioneer's license?
Yeah, Mr. Rousher came in last week, and he's requesting this for Elm Street.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the application for auctioneer's license for 119 Elm Street on October 16th at 10:00 a.m.
Second, a motion made in second, any further discussion? My only comment would be, and, you know, knowing where this is on Elm Street, it probably won't be an issue, but it's also Homecoming Day. There'll be, there's going to be, I would expect there's going to be a ton of cars along Elm Street for this auction parking, so
Have a police detail, by the way, out there.
Sure.
Mr. Rousher talked
Then you're also going to have Homecoming, there's going to be a lot going on. It's all basically at the same time, too, so October 16th is going to be a busy day in town. Carrie?
She texted me, she said she was going to try to get in, and it's not letting her into the meeting, so she's texting me to apologize, and she's not here. She said she's been trying by phone and by her computer, and they're not letting her make contact.
Okay.
So she just wanted me to cut down here.
Okay, so what Carrie was just saying is that Claudia, our COVID coordinator, has been trying to log on but is having some technical difficulties, so
She says she apologizes, and she'll touch base with you.
Okay.
She texted me to get that message, you guys. Sorry to
Great. Well, thanks, tell her thank you for letting us know that. So hopefully we'll have that resolved, and maybe by the next meeting, she can, she can come and, yeah, let's try to get that resolved. Or she can come in person, she can do that.
That's right, yeah, she could. Did you have anything to add regarding the COVID report?
Just in case the Claudia, well, then people get on, if you have questions, because obviously I'm trying to stay a part of the process and what's going on.
Thank you, yeah, that's
Did we vote this?
Vote.
The auctioneer's license?
No, we made a motion.
Okay, then I got all sidetracked. Okay, so on the auctioneer's license, all those in favor, aye. Aye, okay, so, Bob, if you want to sit down, I mean, I, I mean, we had the call, which was six new cases.
Which is surprising, but as you had said, you know, people need to realize that it could be just a single household.
Correct, so that was probably the biggest thing. I don't have all the information that Claudia would have. I don't have all the information that Claudia would have, but I could tell you that it is six cases, there's four that are split between two houses, so that, that's something that the residents do need to understand just going forward. It may not be the same every week, they could be in six separate homes if the numbers were to stay there, but just keep that in mind, that sometimes it sounds like there might be a lot, and six cases is kind of substantial for the size of town that we have, but realizing that when it's two in one house, two in another, it, it takes away that mindset of what the state and the country is looking at as considered widespread transmission within the community. If you look at all of the charts, currently at six cases, Hatfield would be considered widespread transmission, but that is not the case when you actually start breaking it down and realizing that it's the way that the households are, so, just for people to keep that in the back of their mind, that don't think that there's six people roaming around town, and it's all over the place, and then it could expand beyond that, it's, a couple of households already have multiple cases in them, and we've had that over the last couple of months since we started, or a few weeks that we've started to re-announce the numbers, it's been the same thing. I think actually, the last time we had six, it was the same thing, I think it was three and three, actually, so it was only two households.
Right, so-
So, it kind of, you know, just keep that in mind as the residents, that-
It's a little bit reassuring, right?
Yeah.
That it's not, and, now, I don't know if my ears heard this right, but I was listening to the radio today, and they mentioned that the town of Athol has 199 cases?
I had not heard that.
That is, unless I just completely heard wrong, even 99 would be, but-
That's pretty significant.
It would be really significant, so, I thought, well, six cases is better than that, so, maybe my numbers are wrong, I was driving down the street, who knows, but, yeah, so, I still think, you know, we're staying reasonably, reasonably low, and that's, that's, that's great, but-
But I did notice the state now has increased the mask mandate for schools until November 1st.
November 1st, correct.
And then they'll make another decision then.
They'll decide again, once, once that comes, and obviously, there's other decisions that are coming amongst, you know, towns and schools and stuff like that. You know, I saw today that Amherst Palom School Regional District, they, they put in the vaccine mandate for their students, so I think it's coming to the area, they happen to be the first one, so it's something else that's going to definitely be on the radar going forward, but-
Up for discussion.
Yeah.
Yep, so, okay. I'm, I'm good, thanks for doing that, and, you know, I appreciate that.
I got another question.
Yeah, thanks. So, with that, I think we're done, unless anyone has anything else? Karen?
We'll make a motion to return.
A motion made in second, any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, record time, but we kicked a lot out to October 18th, we better have our Wheaties that night. All right, very good. Thank you, everybody who joined us, and we'll, we'll see you in October.